Who was that? One of the guys in the Bible or something, Sampson. Cut his hair.
Took away his power.
Yeah. You have a beard and you can't change your own tar? Shake your beard?
I don't need one to start.
Larry?
Okay, we're on. It is Tuesday, February 9. 8:00 AM. Let's call the meeting at order. Minutes of reports received in five.
Ten.
Commissioner Committee Liaison Reports, upcoming meetings, events.
Hello, we got our commissioner training this week. The home builders meeting tomorrow night. Chiefs meeting Thursday. Renegades meeting Friday morning. I'm doing radio Friday.
Mark's gone. No, I'm during KMI.
Check. I just had to...
Well, you know, Mark's out of town. I've been here saying stuff to John Moore.
What time do we have to pick up our...
On Friday at 11:00. Gosh, you shaved.
I did. Glad you noticed. I'd be worried about you. Still worried about you.
Ah, well, it's my wife.
Have you got anything?
Believe, we're still having that, uh... Sales Tax G informational meeting Thursday.
It's on the calendar.
That's all we got. We don't have that on Sunday.
And St. Stan's plus breakfast too. Saturday's a hard fall. Yeah, Saturday's a hard fall. Thursday, I've got KMI. Tomorrow, I've got K Breach and... Not K Board maybe. And I will find out about doing K loss. That's good. Not as bad as St. Thomas. Appointment by commissions. Reappointments to the Cole County Special Services Board. Tom Quinn, Suzie Register, Dan Refro, Mike Rehagen, Gavin Allen. When we were talking about our commissions and boards, I called Jim Casey to make sure that some of these people wanted to serve again. And I think we've got one who has chosen not to serve.
Dr. Michael Wilson does not wish to be reappointed. The other, there's five really. Refro, Quinn, and Suzie Register are due for reappointment to February 28th of 2018. And then Michael Rehagen and Gavin Allen to February 28th of 2019. To three-year terms.
Dr. Rivera gave you a board, so you're gonna have a quorum.
Right, and then we still need a ninth person. We're really looking for somebody in a medical profession to replace Dr. Wilson.
Yeah, I'm talking to one of our doctors. Maybe I can get somebody for you.
I'm sorry, I'm not...
I'm talking to one of our doctors. So I'll see if maybe I can get somebody to help you.
I know several other board members, if it's Dr. McElroy, would love to see him as a...
Yeah, that's who I'm, that's who I'm talking to. I hate to say that, you know, I mean.
It's a little pressure on.
Okay.
Don't worry, we're setting up for it.
We have to do that.
So any motion to reappoint him?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we've met those. Appointment of Don Hillis to Public Works Road and Bridge Advisory Committee.
Are we gonna look at all these, or are we just gonna use two firsts, or what? We're gonna look at all these.
These are the other ones we got people to reappoint.
Yeah.
To point, I guess, is why they're on their separate... But we weren't gonna put it on there. Just not on there separately.
No.
We can still talk about all of them.
Yeah, we've talked about it. It's old business. We've talked about it before as the committees go. I did approach Eric and Larry to just point in on those three committees that they were associated with and get us some data and bylaws on those. And I think Eric got all that information for us, yeah. And I think you guys received that in an email. So I didn't know if you wanted time to absorb that before you got into those committees, or...
I can give you a lowdown of where we're at on the three that we have to help the course. Traffic and Safety, Road and Bridge. The Traffic and Safety and Road and Bridge. We've been looking at the bylaws. And they can read three things, but that would have to go through those boards. Get approved through those boards. Which we'll do. We'll go through that process and then maybe Debbie will know. Do we bring these back to you? Ones are approved by each board. Do you guys approve them as well?
Oh, yes.
But we'll run through that process over the course of the first one or two meetings of each board. And we'll start after this year. We had, we went through and the various members on the different boards. Contacted them. What we found is we had not reappointed, reappointed these people after their three-year terms up. We hadn't kept up with that. And so we went through and found how long they've been on, or when they were appointed originally. And figured out if they still wanted to serve, or if they wanted to be replaced. Or if they wanted to resign immediately, or maybe they wanted to serve until they find a replacement. So we did that. Came up with what is shown here. And what we're recommending, starting here going forward. What each person's term would be, and then get back in two or three-year rotation for terms. And so it's all laid out there. We do have two vacancies on Traffic and Safety Advisory Board. But we don't have replacements for them right now. We had, what we found with the Road and Bridge Advisory Board, we had seven regular members. And the bylaws said that there should be six. But we had not had a Cole County Sheriff or a deputy on that board. We asked Sheriff White if he would like to get back on, get back into that, where they provide members to come to the meetings. And he said, yeah. So we're going, we're dropping back, we're dropping from the seven down to the six per the bylaws. So with two vacancies on that, we could only replace one. And that was, that is Don Hillis, who is agreed to serve on the end of the year. And that's what's recommended today. Three-year term would be Don Hillis. But then on Traffic and Safety, we had to bring by two new members to serve that. Parks Committee, a little bit different. There had not, there was never bylaws created for it. And so we created bylaws to kind of mimic the other two boards, the same format. And there was seven members on that committee. And one person has resigned. And so we're keeping with the six regular members like the other two boards. Per the bylaws, we're gonna stick with the six. So we don't need to find replacements. We'll just have six regular members if we do this. Is there any questions about, anybody have any questions about what we've done on this? The arrangements of the different terms for each person based on how they feel about serving for how long?
What'd you end up on the Parks?
There's six, there's eight, there's six members looking at the bylaws. It's got, the committee shall consist of nine members, two shall be official members. American Public Works, County Register, that is six regular members and one commission member. And so the commission member is voting, seventy-seven voting members. Instead of like you said, previously eight, we just need a separate one.
And then are we gonna be able, we gonna be able to stagger the current members that we have to...
Yeah.
For the term rec...
The term recommendations to the right side shows what we would, starting beginning January 2016. That would be what their term is. So at the end of this year, we would have two people, the one-year term people. Their term retiring, moving and replacing. One question for the different committees. Right now, there's no term limits. That might be something to think about. Do we want to replace them there, two terms, maximum three, four terms? Is there, is there a maximum number of years we want people to be allowed to serve? Or what kind of, how do we, the board, how do they feel about that? So that might be something that, we don't have it there currently, but that might be something that would come out of the meetings. They might ask for recommendations for that.
I think when I was on one of the city committees, it was three, three-year terms. And then you served until the place, 'cause I ended up like eleven years on one of their committees, so...
There might be a way to do that. I mean, we had one Road and Bridge, we had one person, Wayne Burns, who had been on it for seventeen years. It's nice to have that experience on.
We also have those groups that probably meet once every four years. I only have that sales tax on about it, so some of those don't mean as much. I have to have their limits on because if we find somebody that is good and, you know, a good resource to have on there. And tell them, well, you did your nine years, now you can't do it anymore. Then you gotta replace them. And finding replacements, we look at our list right now, it's hard to find people who replace them.
That's what we've run into with planning commission too. You know, it's hard to get somebody to be voluntary to do that, you know. It's pros and cons of both sides.
We've advertised it in the paper the last two years.
Yeah, and we do have an application now, and you can also fill it out online, so... But I know the city, I think they have trouble getting their boards and committees filled too. Kind of a thankless job, and the pay's not real good, so...
So that has its four lists, just to explain where things are on those three boards. But we do need to have Tommy Douglas through.
Make a motion for a group head for Road and Bridge.
I think one of the things that we need to look at is, I think most people don't wanna volunteer for three years. And so I made that comment to Larry and Larry, but anyway, one year or two years. Somebody might commit to that, but three years? I mean, nobody wants to commit to that much time. They don't even know what they're getting into. All of a sudden, you got a three-year commitment, so... Maybe every term shouldn't be three years. Maybe it should be one-year renewable or a two-year. I mean, if I wasn't, I wanted to serve, I don't know that I'd sign up for three years. And that's a big commitment for a lot of people, so...
Did make a motion for Don Hillis.
I don't, no. Second.
I thought you wanted to finish that.
No, I mean, that's fine. I just, you know, I think it's a, it's a concern for all these boards and committees.
All in favor?
Aye.
But is that in the bylaws on all of those? Do we have to change the bylaws? To change it? I don't care if it's two years or three years or...
That's something we're gonna talk to the committees about and see what their recommendations are. So we'll go ahead and try and talk to them and see if they have any suggestions for each one of the committees, so... I mean, on the other side of that too, that we appoint people to a three-year term. And so, you know, when we get people in these committees, and they're not doing their job, we need to be able to remove them from that committee as well. And so, and I realize that we have people that are volunteering, but we don't want people put on committees that are just yes people. Just go with flow. People that are, have to speak their mind, do what needs to be done, so...
Yeah, I think that's who we try to get to fill the positions.
I think we get a body that's upright.
It's hard, it is hard to get people to serve out.
We had to find one for planning commission, and I found a couple more in the last several years, and they, they weren't just yes people, so... I mean, that's what you want on there, is a mix. You wanna represent the people that, you know, whatever township they're from, and things. But some of them are more bodies all you need.
And if that's the case, then do we truly need a committee?
I think the city has, on their committees, missed three meetings and rolled in a replacement. My check.
Yeah, we might.
I'd say if you miss three in a year, you should be replaced. That's one way to get replaced. If you don't wanna do it anymore, stop showing up.
Well, some of our committees that missed three, they wouldn't have been there for a year anyhow, so... It's time to replace them. We've gotta have people that are willing to serve and show up so we can have forums. It's not fair to the other members if they show up and we do not have a forum, so...
And does that, here in the bylaws, that here's in three, second meeting's gonna be three or two rooms, but...
I don't know how deep, which you guys wanna get here, but I have many meetings that I gotta do. We have problems getting forums, and so I think it should be, a quorum constitutes the amount of people that show up. I mean, you tell people there's a meeting, if they don't show, they don't vote. But a quorum should constitute the people that are there at the meeting.
So two people show up?
Yep, two people vote. But that's just, that's just the way I feel about it.
Dry bronzer dip. Well, we have our first Road and Bridge advisory committee meeting. From 2016, the end of the month. So that would be the first one that we can look at the bylaws. Now, I think what we do on bylaws, I mean, the general stuff ought to be the same for all three. You know, you got some things that are different, but...
Sorry, I'm writing something down for us.
Yeah, just something to think about. I mean, I'm not saying that we do it, but I mean, you change the number, well, then all of a sudden, that goes out the window. And now you got people coming to a meeting, you got people that are attending the meeting, and you can't conduct business. So what's the point? I mean, now you just wasted everybody's time. Might as well just leave. For people that showed up, you wasted their time because they can't decide anything. That's not it either, so...
And we have tried to make sure we're gonna have a forum before, like the day before. And if we know we're not, we cancel it. So we had that time where somebody didn't show up, so they would, so they wouldn't have.
Forgot it, or whatever reason.
Usually if you have two, they'll come.
Are we having problems with getting forums?
Not, not recently. We did, probably a year ago, Traffic Safety, we had especially to get the forum. And that was when one of our members was in the hospital park that he's one of the tests resigned. I mean, Road and Bridges had to cancel some meetings because we weren't gonna have enough, so, and reschedule. So, yeah. There are problems.
Is it 'cause we have people that don't serve on it?
No, it's just people have conflicts and stuff.
Is it the time of the meeting? We change the meetings?
We've tried to change some meetings, and we leave that up to the committee. Whether we have early morning, or one of them, I think, meets at lunchtime. We've offered evenings and stuff, you know, staff. We'll make ourselves available whenever it best suits the members.
Just looking at the boards and trying to figure out which ones don't have enough authority. We've not had that problem with planning. We might be right on the person, we do what's ended up happening.
Yeah, we've worked, we've always had people that change your plans, you know, for short one persons. We make sure that... I don't think we've ever... It's been a long time since I was on the planning commission that we've had changed or canceled meetings.
I think there's a little difference between planning commission and if they actually make decisions on things that affect development out of county. Whereas these three advisory boards, that's just what they are. They're advisory. They're just, we're basically just discussing the things that we're doing in the different parts of Road and Bridge Department.
How to do y'all need?
It's quarterly for Road and Bridge. Traffic and Safety is quarterly if there's items. Traffic and Safety does make decisions on road conditions. Yeah, they can come, I mean, there's, Road and Bridge, I think, was initially set up. Larry, Larry does, but I think to decide which gravel roads made the ranking and get it upgraded today. Now that we've, you know, trained, transitioned out of doing predominantly gravel roads to very little. It's maybe the need to have that committee is not here as much. And so what we're trying to do, is we use that committee to make recommendations. Really have some sales tax to review, type of things on that. Also, you know, just different project title-related things. Or just advisory, or what is advisory, just to advise on different issues.
Make sure that what we're proposing to do, you know, we've taken issues to them on Road and Bridge. Seal coating and chip seal, and just get their input. The committee has a lot of experience-based people on it, you know. Just get their input into it, so...
We don't need to meet. Maybe we need twice a year. We had kind of one twice a year. But that would be, we would discuss that at the first meeting.
Right, as needed, as needed. Think they have a meeting?
Again, we'd like to get in for the committee and just so we can, we'll bring recommendations back to you.
We wrote on Don Hillis.
I got a hip code. Been some contract signing, a Cole County Historical Society agreement.
Larry's wondering too, so maybe I'll fill it.
I'm sorry.
Larry was wondering too, so maybe you'll have to fill that.
No, I'm wondering.
We'll get it all done soon.
This is ten thousand. Oh, I'm sorry.
Seven thousand. There's been seven thousand since.
Quite some time. Still reheating their contract, trying to write their own.
I'll make a motion, we signed a Cole County Historical Society agreement.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Approval on signing an agreement for professional engineering services for Liberty Road Bridge replacement.
Hang on to our...
Oh, we lost you.
I think you had to step on these silvers.
See, you got the next one too?
Okay.
What's next?
Oh, gills, rustic oak, is that it?
Yes, yes.
That's all it is.
You mean about dollars?
Yeah, I'll think about everything inside right now. It's cold out there.
Yeah.
Now you gotta be thinking about it all. We need to go with off the floor.
Which one?
Okay, we are doing Liberty Road Bridge replacement.
We, uh...
Look at this.
We worked through the qualification base selection format. We selected engineers to design work for replacement of Liberty Road Bridge over the Rising Creek towards the Taos area. Bartlett West is the selected engineering company. The contract amount is ninety thousand, one hundred dollars. And we reviewed the scope and fee with them, and it is acceptable. And we present approval of this agreement for professional engineering services.
Any questions?
Okay, we'll give that to Taos. I'm just kidding, too, for the record. That wasn't a motion there. I'll be calling Tony Moore to it.
They love to do that. How many, how many submitted we have on it?
I believe it's gonna be five or six. I think it was six.
Most of, several locals, a couple out of town companies as well.
Do we select the engineer based on experience, or...
I didn't bring my file with me, but we had a...
We had a discussion here, so...
Yeah, we had a hundred-point breakout in and had experience, qualifications of the company, experience with the company, geographic location of the company, which is important. A local company should have a little bit of additional ranking because being locally, you understand what the needs of the county are. If you're more familiar with the project. But that was not an overwhelming percentage. We had a, Bartlett West was the highest ranked one. We had, I think the second highest was one of us ranked it.
It was, we got a very good concept. Based on hundreds of sites, areas that were broke down. It was, like you said, personnel was another one.
Yeah, the personnel working on it, the quality of experience of the personnel. Their, their bulk, you know, their format, how they approach projects.
It was based, what we used was based on the UBS system, a qualified base selection. Eric actually went through and made sure that one met those requirements, so...
But when, where does the price come in?
It doesn't.
It doesn't. When you do UBS, you don't talk price until you, after you, a company has selected its help.
Actually, the state statute, when selecting engineering companies, you, you select the firm most qualified to do the project. Then you negotiate a price. If you cannot come to agreement on a price, then you can go with the second ranked consultant.
It's architects and engineers.
I realize that. Price always comes in play. Or should. And I realize we can't make the decision based on price, because I mean, if they're totally out of line, then price does come in play.
I had budgeted a hundred and twenty-five thousand for engineering work on the project, so coming in at ninety, I felt like that was pretty good. And it was right in line with what I would have expected, so...
I just like to see that, see your forms sometimes, so...
I think...
I'm good.
Make a motion to approve the contract with them.
Yes.
I'm so moved.
This is to, the motion is to approve the contract with Bartlett West.
The agreement for professional engineering services with Bartlett.
Yeah.
Do you wanna amend your motion to approve and sign the contract, or... He's got a contract, he's gonna make this on.
I see agreement.
I see agreement. That's what you need signed, right? Okay. I was just reading here, top of the page of the agreement, so. To sign the agreement, professional engineering services. So it's a contract.
To approve and sign the agreement or contract, man, it's...
It's the same thing, essentially. It's just, that's the way. Approve and sign the contract. So a motion to that, then.
Sorry, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Approval and signing of supplemental agreement number one, the crossroads, South County States and Rustic Oaks subdivision, stormwater, street improvements project.
This one is with engineering surveys and services. And working through the original scope of the project, uh, we found three, um, areas we wanted to add to the project that we had originally needed, uh, originally walked through and contracted scope. We have a section of Kerpen Gutter that we have to replace and design stormwater system, um, on Green Ryer. Actually, that's Rustic. We have a section of Green Ryer that we want to realign and do some stormwater work as well that we added. And then replacing a nation profile area, fixing an area on each area. And the amount of that is twenty-nine thousand, five hundred. Now we added two. The original was sixty-five, one ninety-five, twelve ninety-four, six ninety-five. Wouldn't have to be a budget for that. Supplemental agreement, it's a big chunk. That's fifty percent. Yeah, um, these, uh, I honestly don't remember how much I had budgeted before we started over here going on it. I want to say eighty range. Um, these projects, these stormwater projects, um, you try to get it as best you can, just driving through and looking at it. But once you get it into the design work, you find other things that need to be added to. Um, in some cases, we got enough money left in the contract to add some work. Uh, in this case, we did. So we need to do supplemental. If it's a chance for us to do supplemental, that number would be not too steep. Ideally, we come in a little bit under. But this project, in comparison to the, the project we did finished up last year of Woodward subdivision, um, stormwater, I think that would... In terms of the amount of stormwater work required, I would say it's at least fifty percent more, maybe double. In that contract with Bartlett West, it's about roughly upper sixties, sixty-five, maybe. I don't recall any of that number. So proportional, you know, just kind of comparing, comparing it to that one, I'd say probably pretty close to in line with what I expected on that one.
So... Backing up just a little bit, Liberty Road Bridge, just like I get done this year, or?
That project would be on fast track to design and have it out for construction this year or this year. Um, it just kind of depends on how quick the design happens and, uh, timing of when we bid it. It could be completed by the end of the year. Uh, it sets up bid for, uh, a winter construction. So it would probably be spring of next year to be...
Wait.
So we would definitely bid it by the end of the year.
And this project would be for the next sales tax?
Yes, um, if approved, we would start acquiring right away mid-year. Um, I have June, the kind of target date, starting with, not right away easements, mostly stormwater easements. Temporal construction easements with bidding in January, and next year in construction completion and next, next year as well. Uh, the, the engineering work is in the sales tax for, uh, the crossroad, the supplemental, uh, the actual construction work beginning of the next, the next sales tax.
What do we estimate this project to cost?
Haven't gotten that for yet. Um, probably...
Two million?
Ballpark, one and a half. But it would also, we would also include all the pavement work as well, which is a lot in the subdivision.
Kerpen Gutter is up to?
Kerpen Gutter, yeah.
New asphalt, new water, all of it?
All of it. It's in really bad condition, I think, for the most part, at the very end.
Got any questions?
I hate stormwater.
Yeah.
Paying the expenses. I was just looking at the additional stuff we've got to deal with, right away. As it is what it is. These are very intensive projects, not only from engineering, but right away acquisition, construction. They are big jobs. But we found that it's better if you're gonna do something like this, do it all at once, than running around people for, for courses, or years. Just get it done, get it done right. Is that kind of where that big chunk is from, or just do it all at once instead? Well, the dollar amount, part, part of that comes from the overlay account, because we are doing pavement replacement work in there. And so when we, when we get closer to bidding, then we'll know, we'll be able to break out what's what, and assign, you know, certain money to certain accounts. So it's not all coming out, it's not all out of stormwater at all.
Oh, right.
And we do our best to break it down. Um, that's what we did on Woodward.
With these older subdivisions, like the count of Woodward, um, you know, the practices back then when the county wasn't inspecting them. We're trying to cover all our bases, just make sure that we don't have any surprises once we open it up.
Yeah. That's our own fault for making them do that, uh. It has been said a few times, we don't want to be surprised.
I'm sure we'll find some tree stumps on the road.
I've found any bodies before, so.
Yeah, don't go there. I move that we just approve the supplemental, I move that we approve and sign the supplemental agreement with engineering surveys and services.
The contract? Or the agreement?
The agreement.
Second.
No, you gotta stay.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Council's people, are you?
You can sit between yourselves.
What?
Oh.
Discussion of the society.
Sometimes, you know, they put yours on there, but you don't need to.
We're gonna do a lay-just plan after that. Make it whichever one. Why don't we take care, take care of it in person? It's the easiest. This is the hard copy of the maintenance plan that I do every two years. Send you a electronic copy on the thirty-first. All I need is signature in here. There's a copy for the state tax commission, a copy for the county commission, a copy for myself, and an extra copy. So it's just a signature on those that I need today, so I can have our copy sent out.
Yeah, I'll see them.
And the only thing I, I look through the budget as far as it goes, and this is just a plan for sixteen, seventeen. Usually when we ask for reimbursement, or when they ask for reimbursement, they have to send the actual approved budget for sixteen and seventeen. Whenever the year is that we're working on reimbursement. I think in there was fourteen positions, no different than what he requested at budget time. Though in sixteen, we have twelve positions that are budgeted. Again, they only reimburse based on what we showed them. That is the state tax commission.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Would need to approve it, or did we accept it before and we just didn't sign it?
We just didn't sign.
Well, you got a copy of it, but it never was in the minutes, so you probably need to prove that you're signing it.
Okay, so approve that we're signing, or accepting the maintenance plan agreement and approving it? What's your estimate? We're not signing the contract yet.
It's a submission of their plan for sixteen and seventeen.
So we're making a motion to accept the maintenance plan. We usually...
It's a little late for that. Why don't you make a motion to sign it?
Okay, I'll make a motion to sign the maintenance plan agreement.
Sorry.
I didn't know exactly what we was doing.
No, I know, yeah. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes. Okay. You want to continue on, Chris?
Sure. You know, you're signing.
Sure. It's been a multitask.
The twenty sixteen budget salary line, um, I would ask that you would increase that by five thousand dollars. We took on a person the first of the year, and since they were already a certified residential appraiser, with five years' experience, they came in at thirty-five thousand dollars. You would only budget, I think, thirty thousand for that position, and then twenty-eight, seven thirty-two for the residential one position. So that left us just under five thousand dollars short of being able to fill the residential one position.
And as far as the budget went, yes, we did, uh, budget for two open positions, and at that point, we considered both residential appraisers and ones. And at that, um, when the person did get hired in, it was, again, five thousand, almost more than what we were anticipating. So at that time, we just took it away from the other position, so that's just kind of right, that's how we got to where we are now.
So you filled open position that you had?
I filled one of the two open positions I had, and because the person was already certified as a residential appraiser and had five years of experience, they went to the thirty-five thousand dollar level. That's, historically, that's where we hired those qualifications in and of.
You still have one open position?
We have one open position, but we're almost five thousand dollars short of paying for that position, and that's a residential one position. It starts at twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred and thirty-two, I believe. And that's the same starting salary that it's been since two thousand and six, I think.
So you have somebody in mind to build the open position that you have?
I have three applicants right now that we're looking at seriously, and I think I've got one of those that I would like to put in that position.
And actually, the, on the grid, because the grid has moved, it's at twenty-nine eighty, so the last two years it has.
What are you thinking you're gonna need to pay this person?
They will come in at a starting residential one salary, so if you all have it at twenty-nine eighty-one fifty, they would come in at that. That would be at the lowest level for that position.
How many appraiser ones, oop, sorry.
Go ahead.
How many appraiser ones do you have, Chris?
I have two appraiser ones. I have one appraiser two, and then I have two supervisors.
Is that the new one, is the appraiser two is the new one?
That's correct, yes.
So you did not have any appraiser twos?
No.
For that?
No. The, I had previously, but both of the people that I had that were appraiser twos, they are now the supervisors of residential and commercial department.
I think it's definite benefit to have a certified appraiser over there, so.
Yeah.
I'll start to figure out if we had one, or if we had three, and if we didn't have any ones, or whatever, so that's where I was going with it.
Yeah, we have two ones, and both of the people that have, that are the ones, they are working towards their certification. In fact, one of them just last week, uh, finished the training that they need, so they can start keeping the, the hours of, uh, appraisals that they do. Of course, they've got to end up at twenty-five hundred hours of appraisal work before they can get certified, but they're on their way.
And as far as the grid went, you know, when I said we did move the grid, but, uh, we did get rid of the grid for elected officials a few years ago, because even the supervisors that you talked about, there was no place for those on the grid. So that, there lies all the problems with, you know, having a grid, using it for part of the positions, not using it for all of them, everybody following the same title, that's, you know. So, and we did technically get rid of it, so they wanted to, it could make them follow.
So in the whole scheme of things, I mean, you still have an open position, and we could be eight weeks in before a new position starts, and so at the end, two months into the year, I mean, you may not be short five thousand dollars for your salary line. You know, if you get somebody hired, and it looks like we're gonna be short, I'm okay with doing it then. But it's right now, you're not short five thousand, because you have an open spot.
Yeah, uh, if they would come in at the first March, I believe, we would have sufficient money to pay them, but then we're still gonna have to have that budget to prove the following year.
Right, right. No, I get that, but, I mean, I'm, I'm okay, you know, if you find a qualified person and you need those funds to finish your salary line, I'm okay with that, but, I mean, I think we're kind of putting the cart before the horse. If you don't get somebody hired, you know, you have sufficient money in your salary line, so. But, I mean, you know, if we need to make that adjustment, we can make that at the end of the year, or whenever, right? So, is that all right?
Yeah, that's, that makes sense, so. We're not...
Yeah, I'm a little anxious for that issue, and then the final thing I had was I wanted to talk about a memorandum of understanding, like you know with other offices, to fill out the last two positions that I'd been needing. And I'm really desperate for a general certified, somebody that's certified to do commercial appraisals. We're really hurting there. We spent almost forty thousand dollars on that last year, and some of the appraisals we got, we were not very thrilled with, and I think we've covered that ground before. It's better if we have somebody on staff who we have the oversight of, so they can complete the appraisal based on the foundation of the ways that we have been taught and that we do these appraisals. There's a lot of controversy right now over what they call big box stores, like your Walmart, your Lowe's, your Menards, things like that. Two different ways that people are valuing these. These are what they call build-to-sue properties, and when the company that builds them no longer has a use for them, they are trying to say that, well, these buildings have no value now, because they are no longer serving the purpose they were built for. Nobody would use it except them. Well, if that's not the case, because they still have value, and people have been repurposing these quite often. But that's, that's the big thing that we're, we're dealing with, with the big box thing, and that's one of the reasons that we had some problems with some of the appraisals we got. That we had contracted out.
You said you spent forty thousand last year. What, what would the salary be?
It would probably have to be anywhere from forty to fifty. And it wouldn't be just those properties that had to have appraisals done for them. I've got one person doing it now, and, excuse me, we've always had two up until the time that my previous, um, deputy retired at seventy-two years old. And we hadn't been able to fill that position since then. And there were two people doing commercial appraisals at that time. Plus, she did also her, you know, she was the chief appraiser, and served as the deputy. She did all that work, excuse me. So now I've got just one person doing commercial appraisals, and it's too much of a load for him. It's, it's more than he can get done in a year.
So I just had to have a commercial appraisal done on a piece of property, and as, I did a little research on this, and it seems like commercial appraisers are very hard to come by. And as, I did a little research on this, and it seems like commercial appraisers are very hard to come by.
Yes, they are.
Because nobody wants to train them.
It's not that nobody wants to train them, but it's that they've made the qualifications so difficult anymore. You've got to have a four-year degree to be just a basic residential appraiser. And then you've got to have almost another two, two years of training in the appraisal class. Then you've got to have about thirty-six hundred hours of actual appraisal work to become a general certified. It's, it's very difficult. I mean, the amount of training that you have to have to do that is almost as much as you have to have to be a D O, and, you know, become a doctor. And I think part of the reason that that, that that's happening now that they've changed qualifications is they're trying to get to where they can start asking for more money for these types of appraisals. And they're actually kind of limiting the deal. There aren't very many people that are going out here in Jeff City. We have maybe, maybe four. And there aren't any, there isn't anybody I know right now that's currently working on a general certification.
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess where I was going at is because it's becoming very difficult to do that, and because they have to have so much training, and, you know, kind of a midterm mentorship or apprenticeship, whatever you want to call it, that, you know, why would somebody want to make forty or fifty after they put in six to eight years doing that? I mean, I, I mean, if I was doing that, I'd be asking a hundred and fifty thousand.
I understand that, and part of it is the-
Truly.
Job security, I think. Uh, I spoke to the Cape Girardeau County assessor yesterday. He's actually got two generals on staff, and he's a general certified himself. But his general positions is making fifty-nine thousand right now. So, the reason that we might be able to get somebody to fill that position is because of job security. When you're working for yourself, or you're working for somebody else out there, there might not be that many general or commercial industrial type appraisals that need to be done. When you're working in the assessor's office, we always happen to do. So, you know, there's the chance of being laid off, or there's the chance of work slowing down. And, you know, if you get, only get paid based on the number of appraisals you do, then you're not gonna make as much as you might some other way.
Again, I guess where I'm coming from on this one too, Chris, is that if you find somebody, and you've got somebody, I mean, I'll probably work with you on it. But, I mean, I just, I'm not, I'm not willing to just put a bunch of money in your salary line in hopes that you, you can find somebody, but, I mean, so.
That's absolutely acceptable. I mean, that, that means that I can at least begin looking and see what I can find out there and see what it's gonna take to get that position filled. So if I know, if I can come back and say, you know, you all will be willing to do this, because I can't hire somebody or offer somebody a position without knowing that I can pay them. And again, you know, if we can come back and do that, that would be great. But that might be fine with that. I just want to bring it, but, that's true.
I'm, I don't have a problem with you looking to find somebody, if you find somebody and bring it to us. What I have a problem with is whenever the deputy retired, there was money in there to hire somebody to fill that position. And I think there was plenty of money to fill the position at that price. Instead of residential appraiser was hired at a lower amount and used money from that other amount to give some of your employees raises when nobody was accounting, was getting raises. So I'm still a little butt burned on this one. I think that having a commercial appraiser would be good to have. So, I'm kind of wishy-washy on right now, Chris, because I think you understand what kind of stuff.
I, I understand what you're, what you're saying, Jeff. But the explanation that I would give you for that is instead of having one chief appraiser slash deputy, I had, I created two positions where I had a residential supervisor and I had a commercial supervisor. And the biggest part of that money went to those two individuals since they were going to be supervisory positions and be running whatever, you know, that portion of the office, the commercial part and the residential part. And both would have been supervising and training new employees. That's where the majority of that went to.
Yeah, I understand. I don't want to re-ask it, but I do want to re-ask it.
It was kind of a reshuffle. We had to set up a little different, uh, employee division of work, I guess you would say.
I don't think we're gonna get a commercial appraiser for that price, but if you can buy-
Jeff, you, say what, say what you can say.
I will look and see, you know, what I can get them to come in at, and then come back to you.
And maybe going to be like an architect type of position, and that we would pay them by the hour versus what you have been doing under forty thousand? Uh, because again, if you find somebody for forty thousand, you might as well add another twenty thousand for benefits. So it's not forty thousand anymore, it's sixty thousand.
Right, but it's a matter of having that oversight over the appraisals that they're doing. And being able to get an appraisal, there are a lot of times when it comes to appeal time, I will know there's an appeal on property until less than a week before a P O E starts.
I think our last, you saved us a lot of money on appeal stuff because she wasn't good at it. So, the other appraisals that we're getting come without having that person on staff being able to sit there and go, this is how it came up with. But the others are going, yeah, we'll do it at eighty-five dollars an hour to write a report, two hundred dollars an hour if you want to show up, testify in court, so.
There's a lot of that. Plus, it's the time period that we're gonna have. And sometimes we found out that we need to have an appraisal on a big box property, and we're gonna have a P O E hearing on it in a week or a week and a half. There's no way that, uh, a business is gonna be able to provide that for us in that time period.
Say what you can say.
Thank you, sir. I will do what I can and come back to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Thanks, Chris.
All done with, uh, well, okay. I will-
Much allographs today.
Yeah.
I probably have to get to one.
Yeah, I will. Yes, I have one for you, I have one for the tax commission, I have one for the tenant commission.
Clark might have to attest all of that. You would not?
Okay.
You, tax, you-
Uh, penalty appeal discussion.
Okay, this was about Dr. Rowland.
Larry, do you wanna?
I mean, I, I don't know. I talked to Larry a little bit, and my question was, does a postage meter stamp suffice for, um, a postage postal stamp? And obviously, if the postage meter is stamped, that mail is supposed to go out that day. If it does not go out that day, it's supposed to be returned. And so, um, by, by what we have, it's gotta be postmarked, right?
Well, I think what he said never went out, but he knows he's not gonna take it.
Well, that's, that's his office's fault, yeah.
Well, basically, I checked the letter, and you didn't receive it until January sixth. And you're off, so you're, uh-
Well, we didn't-
And the first thing we did when we got it was call someone.
I think postmark, what-
I knew there was gonna be an issue with this.
Bright one.
And we, we wanted to make sure that we were misinterpreting the postmark and the postage meter stamp. And as Chris says, I told him what they have told us, and they've actually done this to some of our people. If it has a postage meter date of, uh, in this case, if it had a postage meter date of December thirty-first, and it didn't get processed by the postal service till January the fourth, they shouldn't, in most instances, they don't even, the postal, post office won't accept it if it's a stale dated postage meter stamp. In fact, we talked to the girls across the way, and they'll say, if you're, you're gonna make your step on Monday, you need to change the postage meter to Monday's date if you're mailing that, if you're running postage on Friday. Is that-
After a certain time.
Yeah, there's a certain time. So, I mean, I, we've, I've always followed the statute, you know, word for word. And, uh, it doesn't give me any leeway. And I, I think in this instance, where he, where he cleverly said that he didn't mail it till the fourth, it doesn't give you any leeway either.
Well, you didn't receive it till January sixth, which is six days after that. I mean, Dr. Rowland's a friend of mine, but I don't think we can make an exception. Six days, that's, that's six days too late.
Even if we didn't receive it till the sixth, if it got lost somewhere in the shuffle, it's been a dated twelve thirty-one, I would accept it. But it stated one fourth. The letter said essentially that they thought the office was picking up mail, they weren't. So unfortunately, it didn't get it. So they mailed it on the second.
Fourth.
Fourth, they mailed it on the fourth.
Yeah, I'm not inclined to, to wait with that loose.
No, we're talking about the letter. I didn't know if this letter constituted an actual request for a hearing. What he was just saying, will y'all even consider it? I wouldn't waste his time coming up here, but if he wanted to, he's more welcome to have a hearing.
That's fine, I just probably discuss it.
Yeah, I-
Letting know that, how we're feeling on it.
Well, I think we're sitting at the sixth, but that's six, I mean, that's six days after the due date, that's-
Well, correct, but I mean, you know, it's, it's stamped by the post office by December thirty-first. It's got a postage stamp on it. Then we'll accept it whether it gets lost in the mail or not. Correct? That's how the statute works.
Correct. But it was not, it was stamped.
Plus, people can change a postage meter. You know, you believe one person, but are you gonna believe the other, you, you know? It's the post, the post office is the objective party here.
Well, but it shouldn't, yeah. So, you know, even if they backed it at the postage meter, they should have refused it and sent it back.
Right.
And they didn't. But Larry's had mail that's, that's postmarked the wrong day and hasn't received it back.
Correct. Several times last year.
Is the vote to deny it, and if you wanted a hearing?
Well, I just kind of wanted to get our general consensus, you know. I just, I just can't wait for, for that, but anyway. So, I mean, if he wants to have a hearing, you know, we can come up, and let him speak at speed. I don't know, you wanna talk to him, just?
I'll talk to him. I, I'm, I don't think we can. I think the law says we can't. And, uh, you set a, act of a precedent if you do. We had this once before last year already, and, uh, we can't. I'm sorry. Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to him.
Or do you want to do that? Somebody else can do it.
Thank you.
I want you to lose good customer over tonight.
I'll get him a handcuff.
You never know how people react when, the bearer of bad news might be somebody that you do business with elsewhere. Could be no different for Jeff or I too. You know, we have other businesses that we do too, so.
Well, if I ever need Dr. Off, you know, you're managed. Oh, I was supposed to say, if teacher left leg.
Other issues, we went to the United Way luncheon Friday, and Krista and Danielle received the, uh, award for the county-
You all got the luncheon?
Our small vis, uh, we're the small, Larry was there.
Largest inquiries of, uh, centers in the small business academy.
Party one.
We're going for next year, twenty thousand?
Sure.
It's on my potatoes.
Well, we're, we're gonna listen, Ralph. I, I, coming back, I mentioned that you are a good promoter, so we're, we're gonna ask you to help us come up with something that's just really, uh, who knows what will be this next year? So, just like you know where I'm, moving on my calendar. Yeah.
At least invite you to lunch, you know, that.
What is this, sir?
Oh, no, Sam, it's-
There was a chicken cornup, one of their, you didn't miss it.
I'll be glad to help out anyway.
Okay. Well, once they come up with the thing-
Watch how you say that.
We will-
We end up taking those off.
We're careful. With us, Chris, do we have any other, anything else?
I don't know, you wanna vote him out of anything? We can do that.
I did want to ask you something.
I think he looks really different with his, with his beard gone.
Yeah, he's grumpier with his beard gone. Why is that, talking, was he being run more? He's probably cold.
He probably is.
Poor guy. He has his old winter coat on there, and he's teasing about getting it shaved off. Uh, what are we on with our G I S? We get that straightened out, so Larry and Larry? Y'all get that figured out, G I S?
Of course, we have issues with the subdivision, you mentioned. I'm not sure, um, it was being scanned down at the commission, or at the city. Since they lost all their personnel, I'm not sure if we're gonna have to take it. See what we can do to the effect, if that's something we use on a daily basis.
Well, Melissa had answered something about it, and I thought that we were, we had some kind of wheels turning.
Yeah. Well, part of the information, uh, what we had when we first, when they, we turned off the S four hundred, uh-
Right, saw that part of it.
Yeah, Melissa showed, yeah, Melissa showed us where we can get it through the new world or-
Okay, so we don't need to do it, I think.
Uh, but the issue that we're still working with right now is trying to find the subdivision class. We used to have them scanned where they could bring up the was, uh, link with G I S that we're looking into.
Do y'all have them? What's that? I left a thousand recorders on the night in the city.
Well, I know, but the, the original, the, the original, the certified copies were from Ralph's office. But when we get a permit, what we do is we pull up the subdivision plan, if it's in a subdivision, to be able to copy that information, and put it with the permit. So that's where we're, uh, we're working through the issue, so. It's work in progress.
Okay.
In the recorder's office, we do, uh, scan every survey that comes in on a daily basis. Also, as time allows, we are also scanning those that the board received them, uh, for this.
The scan, what he's doing, the scan copies work great for us. We don't need a certified copy. And that's, you know, that, we just got it with the new G I S, uh, going to a new platform. We're just working through those issues, so at this point, I, I think it's something we can work through.
Okay. That's just what I was asking, if we were still moving forward. Or if that did a snag, some work at something down at the city, and I realize they lost staff, but we still could have asked a lot of money into the G I S stuff.
No, it's, it's not that. Previously, before Ralph took office, uh, we had issues with being able to scan them and stuff, and with this process. Ralph's a lot more open and easy to work with, so it's, it's just where we get the information. We like it electronically, so we don't, we keep copies in our office, but we're running out of room to keep the file copies if they're scanned. That's all we need, and just being able to get to them. And that's something we're, we're looking into now, so.
Okay. Y'all get a chance to look at the Old Sage City thing, about we can put a sign up or something, if the trucks do get down there?
We did have a chance to get down there last week, but it's still on our, we have to go down, but.
I don't know what else we can do. It's just frustrating.
Yeah.
Ain't got an armed guard there, so.
Even, I'm not sure if you build, turn some of the truckers around, they-
There's all that.
They're prepared to do that. They get this, whatever's on their Garmin or whichever system they're using, that's the way they're going, and they're not gonna be the acro.
There you go, Sam, you need to take a road trip down to Old Sage City, check it out. Maybe you'll have an idea. Tearing up our roads. They put tow trucks down there.
Sam, just bring you up, they, down in Old Sage City, if you go on MapQuest or, or Google or to get directions, if you're coming, I think it's mainly coming in east, they try and route you, uh, down through Old Sage City to get to the correctional facilities, except there's not a road there. It shows up on the, on the web as a, a road back there. It's actually just a path that shows up. We contacted, um, Google and others to try and get that removed from the system. But what Greg Reese, when he filed for us, it said, he said it may take years for it actually to take it on. But with Greg Reese, when he filed the parts, it said, he said it may take years for it actually is taken on. And these guys, when they see it, you know, that's the only way they're gonna go. They won't, even though they drive right by a sign saying the correctional facilities, turn here, and outgoing, they keep on pulling down.
Can we put up a sign that says not a through road or something? I mean, can you?
You could put up a stripper pole and have naked girls down there. They're gonna drive right by it.
Yeah.
They, 'cause they're watching their garment. 'Cause we tried putting up signs after signs, we got the mode out, we got permission from them to use their right of way and everything.
And what happens, they get down to Osage City, there isn't any place to turn around. Why, they get way back in the, trying to follow that path and they realize it's going down to nothing. And then the, at that point, they end up getting their rigs stuck, you know, they can't back them up. And then tow company guys come down and pull them out of the ditch once they get the trailers hung up. Uh, and the ropes, to be honest, down there aren't that good shape. And when they put the alberghard down and pull these big heavy trucks out, they damage rope. And we don't find out about it until after the fact. Um, you know, we'll get a call from one of the local citizens saying, hey, uh, they must have another truck stuck, so, um, but the sheriff's department, law enforcement, nobody's notified. And they just call for a tow truck, they come down and pull them out and get them back on the road and, you know, all we find out about it is after the fact.
So could that be considered an accident?
It's property damage. I don't know how it's.
I'm just thinking these, these tow truck companies are complicit in failing to report an accident.
Well, that might.
That's an angle we can try.
Yeah, and you know, if we.
And also too, property damage.
Yeah.
He sent pictures of where they turned around in the yard and there were trucks everywhere.
Find out who these companies are.
Well, there's only really two local.
Well, then we tell them.
And they have to send a big, one of the big trucks down there.
Yeah, it's one of the big trucks.
What the heck does that cost to tow, uh?
It's not cheap for the, for the tow company, or the trucking company, but again.
Please be advised.
We've worked.
Failure to file an accident report is crime and property damage.
Well, you do a little looking into that and see if we can go that angle and send them some kind of a nice.
Just do it. Yeah. I think let's do it.
Require the towing companies to notify.
Well, I think we let the towing companies know that they're, um.
We can get them to say an accident.
You bet. They're complicit, well, if they're causing the, uh, damage and then running off, they're leaving a stain.
ABC tow company, they don't care if they damage the yard. They're just gonna send a bill to the tow company, or to the trucking company. And one of the guys down there, and we were talking about them, he got ahold of the trucking company and they, believe it or not, they said, well, we'll send us a bill and we'll try and take care of it. 'Cause they didn't have any clue what was going on with it.
Yeah. Well, again, you know, if, if someone sends a letter, you know, we send, they're just, you know.
Well, that's why it's trying different angles.
Well, I think.
She had any ideas or?
I think it should come from the commission and.
Somebody needs to be responsible. It's their.
And, and, you know, let's talk to Greg White too.
Well, the problem is, like I said, we never know about it.
Until they're gone.
Until they're gone. And they, if you contact them and say, well, it wasn't our truck down there, uh, you know, I don't know how we'll get this resolved to where we can.
Doesn't hurt to try.
Yeah. No, I think if you put the, the towing company, local.
Put them on notice that they're gonna be held accountable.
Well, I think residents down there don't wanna be called. The sheriff, making him come down there just to, there's a truck tied up down there. So they don't wanna be messing up their time, but that may be what we have to do, you know.
That's what you pay.
I know, we've been contacted in the past by highway patrol and, uh, when they work accidents, you know, if there's guard rail damage, you know, about sending a bill, they give us information to, uh, you know, whether it's a street sign knocked down, they said, here's the information, send it, you know, uh, if you're, you'd like to submit charges for replacing whatever was damaged. We never hear nothing out of, um, out of, uh, the trucks down there in Osage City. That's not fair. People live down there.
I love to work on that bit. Try that angle. What about your handicap parking spot, Sam? Do you get that cleared up?
Yeah, I don't even know who, it, it.
Donny, we can talk to him.
We've got so many different vehicles now parking there.
Donny handles it. Okay.
All right. That's fine. It's always full.
It, it is. Well, my understanding now is the vehicle it's using is somebody who works for us.
Works for the courts.
Our handicapped are on hold in business.
Can't do anything.
Do we have to reaffirm the valid. Language, Debbie?
Yes.
Do we have to reaffirm that valid language to go with the county wide?
I think county wide proposition.
Okay, it's all business, so we can.
Yeah. Emergency.
I just went over to ask Steve what he needed and he just wanted this to be redone.
Okay.
We have a date changed on there, then we would change that to the county wide proposition makers. Washington's got theirs on there.
Yeah.
County wide, okay.
I mean, I don't think you'd have to go nothing different, just the wording. I don't know. Do they need to approve something on that?
Just say, yeah, we're fine with redoing the wording.
Did we get it all correct? Uh, you said, said there was a couple changes to the remarks. Is that all we ended the day over?
As far as what I think is the dates and calling it county wide proposition A instead of just proposition A, that's it. That's all they're asking for. The county clerk is clarification for that on the, for the ballot, to be printed. So approving the clarification of.
Just prove corrections to the prop, to the ballot language.
Yes, my question was, do we need two thousand eleven in there?
Yeah.
Because that's about like the second.
It's renewed in the two thousand eleven one, instead of renewing the two thousand six one, so.
That was last time's ballot language. And I didn't change the date to two thousand eleven.
Actually renewing to nineteen eighty.
Well, that's what I, that's what I was wanting.
That's kinda what I was thinking in the first place. And I asked Debbie today.
I said, was. That's where you were going.
Yeah.
But when I talk to the Secretary of State, he'll tell me when they wanna keep renewing it, they, they wanna know if they've got a pass. They wanna know the last time it got passed.
Seven or five years.
Yes. So that's the way we've been doing it, is the last five year date. I mean, I'd hate to take it back all the way to nineteen ninety-two, but.
Right, but I mean, you know, for a lot of people that don't live here, know the history, they don't know. Everything is just perfect. Initially got passed in two thousand eleven.
But if you've been doing it history and they read nineteen ninety-two, are they gonna need the last time it got, five year pass?
I, I get that. I mean.
We can tough and circle them out. Cause we could go any which way.
Put it this way, if the Secretary of State's office told Debbie to do that, that's probably what we should do.
That's what they're looking for.
I'm buying it.
And it's not been invalidated up till now.
So you gotta resubmit it?
Yes, to Steve.
Make a motion to correct the ballot language.
So, did you look at it? Cause I haven't looked at it. I haven't looked at it.
All we need to do is right here, where it says August eighth, two thousand six, we're gonna change it to whatever date, two thousand one. And then call it county wide proposition.
See what you.
The rest of the resolution.
Think of any other. Think of basically what's copied based on the first part.
Yes. And the resolution, all the dates were updated, but on the attached.
You're not submitting this back to Steve then, right?
That's what's his copy that he just gave me. Wanna walk over that?
So what's the date?
Sorry, Sam.
What's, what's the date that we need to change here?
Rest of the way.
June, oh, two thousand eleven.
June what?
Two thousand eleven.
June what? June seven. Get it and make sure you get it right.
It's a special one.
I saw it already. I was planning on the changes. They, they made sense. We can go back to ninety-two.
We need a motion.
You know what?
I'm gonna look at the old. Last time it was on its own ballot, wasn't it? Eleven, it was, that was the only thing that was on ballot, eleven, right?
June seventh, two thousand eleven.
Cause that's why we had, we were gonna put Prop eight on it, I think.
Go back to the last five.
Yeah, that was all we had on the ballot. But they, I didn't know if they got rid of it or didn't. Don't even have it.
It just costs you more money, cause you can probably have one. It costs you a ton of money to have a special election.
That is, that's almost your basic thing. As if there was a June then.
It's June seven.
June seven.
I'd say the city would do their thing. You don't have to do it with the general elections. Guess they say that when they have the special elections, you'll have the people that come out that wanna support it, vote it. Instead of just people that cannot vote no on everything, like in general elections.
I'm going to approve changes to the sales tax ballot language.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Okay. What's that? Ms. Kristen, you got something?
No, I'm waiting for contracts. You got your emergency contract? Celebrity Road.
Window started March twenty-first. How many parking places are they gonna need for that?
If I get it. On the day that you asked for the agenda for March that week and twenty-fourth and twenty-seven, can we go ahead and have a limited agenda that week? We'll probably have accounts payable. So just, I can ensure that you take a period of those for, you know, March.
Better be nice to me.
All the way till March, don't worry.
Better bring us some. Can't have donuts anymore. It's supposed to be healthy.
When will those all be answered by?
So that is an odd one, so there may not be any out now.
That's fine.
Then I'll make sure it's a limited agenda.
Any other issues?
Nope. I have to play out those emails.
Um, we are working on the last phase of the security, uh, in terms of the access doors. They're at the juvenile center, so. So I think I'll be sending you a email on it. There may be a upcoming change order on that, so.
Busy place over there then.
Yes.
They're probably finishing up page three, I think, so.
I hope after, I hope Michael let me know when they was there. Probably come over and do a.
Our website stuff is going very well. We'll, I have to, I wanna come down, working with that company, so. And I'm sure we'll be up and running pretty soon.
Anything else? Motion to recess and so forth, the H P M.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.